It'd be worth a whole one cent each.
Too funny.
I have six o'clock and I cannot see everyone who's here, but it looks like I could do. Well, actually, roll call is one of our first items. So I think to keep us on schedule, I'll go ahead at six o'clock and my agenda says that I'm to call us to order. So that being said, I will call us to order. It is Wednesday, August 19th, 6:00 PM. And this is City of Montrose, a city council and planning commission work session. And I will turn it over to the city clerk to call roll so we know who's in this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum. I'll go with the city council first. Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Lasbell.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
And with our planning commission, Anthony Dusso.
Present.
Greg Easton.
Present.
Jan Chastain.
Present.
David Fisher.
Present.
Chad Huffman.
Present.
Karen Vaca.
Present.
Phoebe Benziger. So I think we are missing one planning commissioner, but everyone else is present.
Great. Thank you. And Phoebe is brand new to the planning commission. I'd assume someone let her know about this meeting and made sure she had the right link to be in the meeting. Okay, great. Then I will turn it over. First, I want to just thank everyone for being here. I want to thank our planning commission for the hard work they do. City council really appreciates it. We don't get an opportunity. And I don't think we've ever had one in my time on council for the city council and the planning commission to meet together. I wish it was in person, but thank you for your service to the city. Your job is so important and we really do appreciate you and we appreciate everyone taking time to come together tonight. And so with that, I will turn it over to the city senior planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you very much. I'll reiterate that. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming together tonight for this joint session to talk about the comp plan goals and objectives. I also wish we could have done this in person. We've rescheduled it several times in hopes of getting to meet in person, but that just wasn't possible right now. And it is something that we need to move forward with so that we can keep our comp plan on track to complete by the end of this year. So that's why we're doing it now virtually and hopefully it all goes smoothly. I'm going to start with a presentation to just kind of talk about the background and how these different things were developed. And then we'll go through the goals and objectives a little bit. So with that, I'm going to start with sharing my screen. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
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 So some of this is going to sound familiar to you, to those of you who went to some of our different comp plan workshops and public meetings and some of our advisory committee meetings. But for some of the who are new or who weren't able to make it to all of those, I wanted to just give a little brief overview of what we did this last year. So first of all, our first master plan for the city of Montrose was actually developed in 1961. And then we had additional plans developed in 1978, 1998. And then our most recent one was done in 2008. And that's the working comp plan that we go off of right now for all of our planning. A comprehensive plan is a 20-year vision with a 10-year focus. That's what we kind of came up with when we started this process and where we came up with our kind of our slogan, envision 2040. A comprehensive plan helps us to establish a community vision, values and overall goals for how we want kind of the city to operate over the next 10 to 20 years. It's a long-term plan that helps guide the physical growth of the city, development and the services that we offer. It also provides us as a guide for decision-making and implementation. And that's one of the big things that's going to be a little bit different about this comp plan than some of others in our past. We're going to have a pretty in-depth chapter that's just on implementation that helps us talk about how we're going to go forward with implementing a lot of the different goals and objectives of our plan. So these topics that you see here are the comprehensive plan topics that we did for our workshops, which I'll talk about a little bit more. And also the primary topics that will be the chapters of the comprehensive plan. So we'll be talking about land use and growth, transportation and mobility, housing in neighborhoods, parks, trails and open space. And recreation and tourism is kind of mixed in with that as well. Health and environment, economy and opportunity. And tourism is kind of wrapped into this chapter as well as it relates to the economy, the downtown. And then, as I mentioned, a separate chapter that's for the implementation plan. When we first began this process, David Spear helped us develop a comprehensive plan website, which was kind of a one place where everybody could come to get all their information on the comprehensive plan. People who are interested in the plan can also go to that page and click a little notify me button so that they would be alerted of any time there was going to be some kind of public outreach or meeting or anything like that. We also posted news flashes on that page. So like tonight's meeting, we did post an outreach to say that we were going to be having this meeting with city council and planning commission. So that anybody who had been registered on that notify me page would be notified of tonight's meeting and could listen into tonight's meeting. Everybody who signed in at all of our public meetings, we automatically put them on that notification list. So that way, members of our public who were interested in the comp plan continue to receive notifications of our process. So this website also contains all of our maps, current ones that we had that we're working off of and then new ones that may be approved. As some of you know, we completed an existing conditions report back in June or July, I believe it might have been of 2019. So that new existing conditions report is posted on the website. For those of you that might want to see that, that was developed just a little bit before we got too in-depth on our workshops. And then we also have posted all of the presentations that I've given to all of the public on this website. So those people who were not able to attend our public meetings could go in and see the presentations that we gave as well as the meeting summaries. So as many, we had a contractor, Noel Hagan, who's former city council, who also helped us with all of our meetings. She was a wonderful asset to this project and helped, just helped us run every single one of our public meetings and also helped us with some of our meeting summaries too. So she was very valuable in this process and helped us out a lot. Now I'm going to just kind of give a brief overview of our public input that we've had, just to kind of form the background of these goals and objectives and the guiding principles that we're going to be talking about tonight. They weren't something so the public knows that we just came up with as a staff and then we're presenting and saying this is it. The comp plan objectives, goals, guiding principles, they were all developed based on the public input that we received over the course of the summer and the fall. So we started with our first community kickoff meetings back in June of 2019. We had one that was English speaking and then an identical one that was Spanish speaking. And we had a facilitator from Denver actually come to help us run that one as well. And the whole thing was in Spanish. We did a lot of different activities to help get feedback on what the community wanted to see. We started with some, what I love about Montrose cards that you kind of see in the picture there where people came in and just kind of told us what it was that they liked about our community. We also did a little exercise called pennies in a jar that you heard Stephen kind of talk about at the beginning of this meeting where we identified a lot of the different top values that we thought might be important to the community. And the members would vote on what their favorite or their top values were in the community based on the numbers of pennies that they put in the jar. So that was really fun. And then we did a little mapping exercise where people broke up into small groups and worked on a map. And they talked about developing a vision and things that they wanted to see changed or created within our community. And a lot of, all those meeting summaries, like I mentioned, are on our website. So if you want to see the results of all those different meetings, you can certainly lie on there if you missed any of those to see what the results of those meetings were. In conjunction with this community kickoff meeting, we also did an online survey. So we also wanted to make sure that those people who were not able to participate in person could give us the same kind of feedback that they would have if they would have attended in person. So we asked these same questions in our online survey and we left that open for several months, actually, to get feedback from the public on what they loved about Montrose, what their values were and what kind of things they wanted to see created or changed in our community. I mentioned this a little bit, but we also had some community workshops. After our kickoff meeting, we decided that we were going to have kind of subject matter workshops where we just talked about the main topics of the comp plan, separated out by topic in their own individual workshop. As you can see here, a lot of them are the same as what ended up being our chapters. As I mentioned, recreation and tourism, we decided not to make its own chapter in the comp plan, but we kind of wrapped recreation into parks, trails and open space and tourism a little bit into the economy. But these were all the different workshops we had. As you can see, we also did a specific Spanish speaking workshop as well, where our facilitator came back and helped us with that. The attendees, it ranged, we had probably about 30 to 60 people attend each one of these meetings, just kind of depending on the topic. There are some, of course, that were hotter topics than others in the community. We had probably a higher turnout for housing in neighborhoods and transportation than some of the others. But in addition to the workshops, we also had our GIS department develop a really fun interactive online map. And that was provided on our website and we gave outreach to the community, letting them know that if they weren't able to participate in these workshops, they could go onto this map and they could pinpoint different places in town that they thought needed changed or something new created. And they could highlight and say the topics such as housing and neighborhoods. And then they could pull down another dropdown menu and say that it was something that needed to be changed. And then they could put in specific comments about what it was that they wanted to see happen there. And overall, so I also put all the comments that we received from the workshops into that interactive map so we could consolidate them all in one place and have an easier way to summarize them. And I think, I won't know the exact number, but we received over a thousand comments between all of these workshops and our online interactive map. So I thought that was really encouraging as well as to see how much input we received from the community. So in addition to our public outreach, we also developed a comprehensive plan advisory committee early on in this process. We did an outreach via the newspaper and a few other methods, I believe. As Montrose Mirror and the newspaper, and I think one other method of social media possibly, asking for people in the community who wanted to be a part of this advisory committee as we went through our process. We ended up having 15 members from the public and it ranged from just individuals who were interested in the process to business members and even, you know, different people from different organizations. So it was really a wide variety of people representing different interests. We also invited the entire city council and planning commission to be a part of our comprehensive and advisory committee. And we had a lot of feedback from those members as well throughout this entire process. So some of the roles of the comprehensive plan advisory committee was to promote public involvement. So when we started the process with the advisory committee, we really wanted to emphasize so that we wanted them to reach out to our community members and invite them to come to the public meetings. Or if they couldn't come to the public meetings, to check out our website and get involved there to provide input and feedback from every, regarding the different subject matters. We also wanted them to kind of serve as a sounding board for the community. So we asked our advisory committee members to attend as many public meetings as they could and listen in to what the public was hearing. Because of course, we see things on the maps and we get comment forms from the public. But there's also a lot of discussion that happens, you know, at those tables when we're sitting around the map, talking about things that we wanted to see created and changed. And so our advisory committee kind of served as a sounding board for the community as far as what they heard from different people, both of the public comment period and just out in the community about things they thought were important to the public. They also helped us to establish our community vision. So we had probably about 15 meetings, for my records, between 2019 and 2020, where the comprehensive plan advisory committee, we actually sat around the table and we came up together with a new community vision based on the public input that we received. And it also helped us to establish the guiding principles and the goals and objectives that we're going to be going over tonight. And then they also helped with our implementation plan. We're not going to go over that in detail tonight, but the comprehensive plan advisory committee was very valuable to me especially in just helping us to form all of these different parts of the comprehensive plan. So as I mentioned, we have some guiding principles, some goals and objectives. And these are just kind of the framework that kind of shaped the document to start out with. So I kind of did a brief description of what guiding principles are versus goals and objectives. And I'll read those briefly in case there's anybody listening and on the phone that can't see the video. Guiding principles are basically value-based guiding principles, which helps us establish the framework for decision-making. And then the goals are broad, long-range statements that help represent the big picture ideas and helps us to achieve the desired result of the guiding principle. And then beneath the goals are objectives. There are specific directions that will help guide the decisions and that will help lead to accomplishing the goals in our plan as well. So tonight, what we kind of want to go through is we're going to go through, we're not going to go through line by line, because I know all of you guys have seen this and you've helped us develop this plan, the guiding principles, goals and objectives. But I want to kind of, I'll probably read through the guiding principle and then just ask, as you read through these yourself or, you know, you've probably read through these numerous times and maybe even before this meeting. Did we include all of the major ideas and concerns that were presented to us during the public outreach? Or are there any things that we missed? Are there any big picture ideas that we heard during those public outreach meetings that maybe we've missed now that we've had time to look at this several times and go over it? Or are there any other misrepresented statements that we maybe got wrong? So that's kind of where I'm going to start, what I'm kind of asking from you guys tonight to see if there's any big picture ideas that we missed. Before we get into that, the details, I kind of wanted to give a next step so you know where we're going from here. What we're doing right now on the city staff side and with city management is I've been working on the draft comprehensive plan. I did quite a bit over the winter and have been doing a little bit since March. It's kind of, the writing part has probably been a little slower since March, but we've got quite a bit done. And so when that gets done and we're done drafting it, city staff and city management will review that draft. And then we'll bring that also to city council and planning commission to review. We don't know what date that's going to be quite yet, but we will keep you posted. And then after it's been reviewed by those two groups, we will have another public meeting with a rela- release of the draft comprehensive plan, same thing, date to be determined. So this is the estimated timeline. I did change it a tiny bit. Numbers four and number five, I changed a little bit from probably what you guys saw early on in the comp plan process, just because it's taking us a little longer to write the comp plan since March hit. So we are still hoping to have this done by the end of this year and I believe we can accomplish that. All right, so now we're going to do our discussion on the guiding principles, goals and objectives. And I'm going to share that screen first. So all of you should have received in your packet, the document that we'll be going over here. Let me get to that document here. But I'm going to go ahead and share it in case anyone doesn't have it out in front of them. Okay, are you able to see that? So as I mentioned at the beginning, this is the comprehensive plan or comprehensive plan advisory committee helped us to develop these, this vision statement, these guiding principles, the goals and objectives. I wanted to read through the vision statement, the new vision statement that we all came up with. The new vision statement would be, Montrose will strive to be a healthy, safe and thriving community that embraces diversity and the environment. We will come together to grow responsibly to create opportunities for all. And then guiding principle number one was based on our first topic, housing and neighborhoods. So this guiding principle is to encourage access to a broad range of housing opportunities to the facility, through the facilitation of programs and partnerships. So as I mentioned, I'm not going to read through each one of these goals and objectives, because I know you guys have all seen them a lot. But I'm going to open it up to just comments on housing and neighborhoods to see what you guys think about that section.
Amy, this is Greg. First, I want to say thanks for all your work putting this together. I think it's the easy part to critique what you've done. The hard part is the creative energy that you've put into it and thank you. Under neighborhoods, HN4, it says encourage safe, stable, well-maintained and livable neighborhoods. Now, I apologize for not being a part of your surveys and meetings, so I missed out on all that. But the previous comprehensive plan identified the mobile home parks in the downtown area as possible redevelopment properties. Specifically, the one on San Juan and West Main. And I think my concern with, with those is do they represent safe, stable, well-maintained and livable neighborhoods? And is that something that we could address?
Say that last part again, sorry, you cut out.
I'm just wondering if that's something that we could address in the comprehensive plan.
Sure. So the goal number four, when we talk about encouraging, you know, those neighborhoods to be safe and well-maintained and livable, it's referring to all the neighborhoods within the city. And so we don't get it specific about which neighborhoods and we don't call out specific ones that we're going to do certain things with because it's a broad goal. And then we have, you know, as you see, specific objectives in there and how we're going to accomplish that goal. And then we did put, you know, some things in our implementation plan. Those are the more specific items of things that we can do to help accomplish those goals and objectives.
I'll chime in and say that I think in a lot of ways, this version, this updated comprehensive plan as compared to the previous one, I think gets away from the, is more about what we want to accomplish instead of how we want to accomplish it. And I think that's really important. So whereas in the past, we might have included a specific neighborhood or a specific, I'll say park. I think this year, we tried to get away from that and talk more about what we wanted to see happen and not exactly how to make it happen, that those were in the details and not in the higher level structure.
And also, Amy, and you can elaborate on this because I missed the ladder of meetings, but we purposely used the terminology promote and encourage on, to ensure that we didn't say we could do something we cannot do or don't have control over. Like, for instance, if we don't own a mobile home park, we can't change that park. We can say what we like to see happen, we'd like to encourage it, but we really don't have ultimate control over what happens there.
That's correct.
One of the things I was discussing with Bill and Ann is the possibility with goal H1 and two especially, is to redo the redevelopment overlay district or expand those boundaries. And I think just in our conversations, kind of in dealing with those particular two objectives, that by expanding that redevelopment overlay district, it gives that option for the additional dwelling and mother-in-law dwellings. And I just thought that might be something that by expanding the boundaries of that, I'd like to see us, some kind of conversation about that. Because I think that would help us accomplish specifically those two goals.
That's a really good point, Dave, and it actually is one of our implementation items to help us to implement, implement these goals and objectives. We talked about desire to make the redo district larger. Any other questions or comments on guiding principle number one? Okay, if not, I'm going to move on.
I hate to go back to like higher level goals. And I think we've probably talked about this a lot, but goal HN2, affordable housing, increase access to affordable housing. A lot of times when we talked about affordable housing, we'd come back around and we'd get caught up in affordable to who? And does that mean one thing to you and a different thing to me? And we'd talk about instead using words like a variety of options in housing or something like that, which, which under the objectives, it kind of says that. I just wonder if in the heading, we shouldn't use affordable housing, because that, some people think that means something very specific. That's more of a comment than a, like a, does anyone?
I would absolutely agree with Mayor Bynum on that, that a lot of the state and federal level programs, the phrase affordable housing means something very specific. And one of the conversations we were having was the term market rate housing or workforce housing. Maybe getting, getting away from specific terms like that might be beneficial.
So in our comprehensive, the draft plan, we have at the beginning of each chapter right now, a section that has a definition of terms for each chapter to help people understand what each of those things are. And I'll have to pull that up to get the exact definition unless Ann knows it off the top of her head. But you're right, affordable housing means something very specific and it has something to do with, if I remember correctly, like 30% of your income or something like that spent on housing. But we'll identify, you know, have a highlighted section on just the key terms so people know what it is we're referring to exactly when we say affordable housing versus market rate housing or workforce housing. So that's going to be in the definition at the beginning before you even get to the goals and objectives so people will understand those terms.
Yeah, that's assuming people read those terms. I think, I like the objectives that come under it. I just, yeah, okay.
Well, Amy, maybe we can make a note of that, especially as we're melding the implementation plan and the draft with the goals and objectives to go through. And that might be a discussion next time is this term. We've been hearing it, this question come up a lot lately. And Amy's right, you know, when we started these meetings, we, with the public, we knew that was something we had to explain and define because people think of affordable housing as so many different things. You know, some people think of affordable housing as only this category of maybe low-income housing that is subsidized. And the way we used it throughout the process was affordable housing is housing when you don't spend more than 30% of your income on the rent and the utilities combined. And so what's affordable for me might be different than what's affordable for a friend of mine, based on our incomes and things like that. And so I think that's where we got these objectives, but I appreciate the comments because if it's not clear to this group, it's likely it won't be clear to other community members who are reading through this plan.
It seems like if you tie the first two goals together, one is a housing, a variety of housing types and the goal two is a variety of housing prices. Or maybe that's not what the goal is. The goal really is to provide houses that are less expensive. It has nothing to do with providing housing in different types. It really does mean houses that are less expensive. But anyway, we can keep moving on. That's, that's just, that term just drew my attention.
Sure, I'll make a note of that too. Any other comments on housing before we move to guiding principle number two? Okay, we'll move on to guiding principle number two, transportation and mobility. And I'll open it up for any comments or questions on this one.
I think, I think this is quite, quite well done. The one comment I would make is that the county planning commission is eager and excited to work with the city planning commission on this transportation and mobility type of plan. And would really love to be involved in that conversation. The, the thought being that we don't want the city to plan a road somewhere in the county, not really kind of take that into factor accounts. So I just encourage that conversation between city and county to happen.
I like the goals that came across in that. And I think they really reflect all the different discussions that happened around transportation and mobility.
Amy, I had a question about, in this section in particular, but any other section where it definitely requires working with other government partners to actually get anything done. When this is, when, when the comp plan's finished, do we go out and share this at all with, with CDOT or the county? Like, have we done that historically, do you know? And is there a plan to do that? Because it's all fine that we want to say that we're going to, you know, work with CDOT to do whatever with the roads. But if they aren't on board with that, or if the county, you know, says they want to help with whatever, but they, you know, they don't agree with what we want to do in the city. It doesn't, it doesn't work if, if we're saying all these things in this plan, but we don't actually work with those people as far as, you know, walking them through what our 20-year plan is.
A really good point, David, and I would agree. I mean, it's very important that we make sure that they're aware of our plans and our goals instead of just saying we're going to do it. They'll, of course, be all invited as stakeholders to our public release of the final draft. And of course, continued conversations as soon as we begin to implement on what it is that we need cooperation and coordination with from those different entities and stakeholders in order to help us to accomplish our goals. I'm not sure what has been done historically in the past. Maybe Bill or Ann might be able to speak to that if they want to. But yes, I would agree with you that that's going to be a very important component of this plan and the implementation moving forward. And we have some specific items in our implementation plan that speak to that as well about different inter-agency and stakeholder coordination.
The fact that we call coordination out as a whole goal, I think shows that we're, we're putting our best foot forward and asking those other agencies to meet us. And I think they have shown a willingness so far.
I think the, the point that I think we're kind of dancing around here is the, the point at which we coordinate. Rather than bringing them a finalized comprehensive plan and saying, here it is, what do you think? Involving them earlier in the process, involving them in a little bit more, not like relying on them to help us plan, but including them in that conversation a little earlier.
No, that's a good point. They were involved, we had stakeholder interviews and invited them to public meetings. And we had some of the county folks attend our public meetings as well. So they have been involved early on in the process. It won't be a surprise to them when we get to releasing the draft plan about what it is that we've done or what it is that we put in there. We did have input from them.
Amy, that's a really good point, and I might just add in, I think you mentioned it before. But also, you know, we all know that people on our team like Scott Murphy are in pretty regular communication with some of our partners, especially about transportation. And so Scott gave us a lot of good input and will continue to do so about things that are realistic and what those realistic timeframes are as he's been working with CDOT over the years, for example.
And I think
Let me say that in the past, it probably was not there on the coordination side, so it probably lacked. None of us were here when we did the last conference plan. So to answer David's question, we don't know how that was rolled out to the county back then. But we know our relationship is very good with them now and that we involved them from day one on our planning this time and invited them to the meetings and that type of thing. And I like the idea of bringing them in and then making sure that they're personally invited when we talk to the public with the draft plan. And then we could even, it'd be nice to hold a, like, like Mr. Frank mentioned, joint city-county planning commission meeting to go over those types of things and even include the council and the commissioners. It would be nice to do that in person. So hopefully by then we'll be able to get into the same room together and talk those things out. But we're fully committed as a staff to continue the great relationship that we have right now for a very long time. So I don't think we're going to go backward when it comes to joint planning and that type of thing.
Any other comments on transportation and mobility?
Amy, I just had one other question before we get any further into this. Are the objectives, are they laid out in any kind of prioritization? Or, you know, does 6.1 or, you know, does 1.1, is it more of a priority than 1.2? Or are they just listed on there as, you know, the way that you wrote them down?
Second, they're not in a priority list. When we get into the implementation chapter, we did set priorities for the different implementation items of things that we wanted to accomplish based on it being a short-term priority, a long-term priority, or something that would be ongoing throughout the term of the comprehensive plan. But the objectives are not in order based on priority.
That might actually be a good thing to reference at the top, Amy, just kind of spelling that out. So when someone picks it up and reads it, they know.
It's a good point. Sorry, I'm taking notes. Anything else on transportation and mobility? Going once, going twice. All right, let's move on to
I'm sorry, Amy, I do where we say like work with regional partners. Do we define that in the definition section of what a regional partner is or what that will mean?
No, we didn't. It can be any partner in our whole region and we didn't define it. We started listing people. And then we realized how that could specifically call out certain organizations and leave out ones as well. Or it could leave out new regional organization that may develop over the course of the next five to 10 years. And so we didn't want to call out specific routes if we could help it in lots of places. So that way, you know, organizations come and go, even regional ones. So we wanted to kind of leave it broad.
Okay.
All right, I'll move down to guiding principle number three, land use and growth. Any questions or concerns on this guiding principle or goals and objectives?
Amy, this is Greg again. In the guiding principles, you use the words encourage and facilitate and manage growth. And it sounds like the objective of our comprehensive plan is growth. And I'm having a little bit of trouble with that. I think that we have a good product in Montrose. I think it's easy for us to attract people here with the outdoor activities, the outdoor lifestyle, the health, even the size of Montrose. And to me, growth should not be an objective. I think growth will be a consequence of us following through with all of these great things that you've, you've done in the comprehensive plan. And it, and it says later in here that we're going to do things to promote the growth of, of Montrose. And I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm struggling with that. Anybody else have comments?
I agree with that. This is Jane, and I do agree with that. Do we really want to, because that, is that the major overriding goal is having a growing community? And that could be pervasive through the whole plan.
Well, that was based off of the public comments that we heard. It wasn't, you know, something that we, you know, came up with and pushed on the public. It was something we consistently heard from the public. And that's why, too, started it with, we're going to help encourage and facilitate that in a responsible manner. Make sure we're doing that in an appropriate way.
I think the, the way it was in the meeting, like when we, when we discussed, I remember like we, we went back and forth on this particular principle, like quite a bit, if I remember correctly. And I think the key is obviously encourage and facilitate. Because I, I don't think, you don't want to be anti, you don't want to, you don't want to not have those words in there. But the key word is that it's managing the growth. Because we are going to grow, like you said, Greg, we are, we are going to grow because we're an attractive place to be for a lot of reasons. And so the, the real, like, if, if you had to underline one of those words or bold one of those words, it would be the manage part of that. And, and then, you know, caveated by doing it in a fiscally responsible way. But just acknowledging that we, we are going to grow and we want to, we want to make sure that we're managing that in the best way possible.
Drastically change the guiding principle if we remove the word encourage?
That's what I was just going to say.
Facilitate and manage growth?
Yes.
I, I actually think that would be a mistake. I think we, based on especially some things that have happened recently, I think it's important as a city that we encourage and we're there to encourage that. And that was beat up pretty heavily in that meeting that we had was we want to be open to, we are open for business. And we want to do it in a very, very responsible way that retains that Montrose small-town character. And I think that that's really important that we continue that because you remove that word encourage, then it's almost as if we don't want to go that direction, which I think also would be denying really the direction we want to go as a community.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And, and there are communities in Colorado which are anti-growth and specifically set out a goal of, of discouraging growth and fighting it. And, and I don't think that was the attitude of the community in these outreach programs that we had. So I think, again, I agree too, that managing it responsibly is a real key to this goal here in guiding principle.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think managing is the important part there. But I don't think taking out encourage necessarily represents that we're anti-growth. What if we, what if we say we support and manage growth? I, I agree that we don't want to be
Encourage to me. That the word support is you're supporting growth or encouraging growth, it's, it's all the same. I think this statement is actually pretty good and fairly complete in and of itself because the way that it reads, encourage, facilitate, and manage growth in a fiscally responsible manner. And here's the best part, and what mitigates that word encourage in a manner that retains Montrose's small-town character in a rural setting. We're setting our, our parameters pretty clearly there that we, we have to either grow or die. The reality is really clear there. Because we, we have to make sure that we are not presenting that image to the world that we don't want you here. We, we do want them here, but we want them here in a way that retains that character.
I think given all of that and the discussion and, and listening to what we heard in all the different stakeholder groups, I'm circling back around to thinking that this excellently captures what we're trying to say.
Any other thoughts?
I agree, a lot of thought went into choosing each word in this sentence. And it, and it is pretty powerful and embodies a lot of concepts. So I think it's a pretty well-written sentence.
You know, Roy, I think in those meetings that we actually spent an entire meeting on each of those words.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm not sure we could do, we could do better in, in tonight. I think they, they do excellently capture that fine balance that we are walking as a community. But I would say that reflecting what we've heard in the community and the direction the city has been going is we are open for business and we are encouraging businesses to look at relocating here. And we're looking at how we can do that in a smart way that makes sense. And so I, I think that actually is a fair word to use with where we are right now in our community and what we, and what we have heard people want.
I think that's the important concept. As you noted during our meetings where we kind of wordsmith these, we weren't just coming up with it based on what we thought was important. But we went through the public comment summaries of everything that we heard and all those comments from the public meeting to help us to develop those guiding principles and goals and objectives, so.
I agree with that. I think that we, we don't want to forget that this is a guideline. And these, these words can be utilized as we go along. And, and as time changes, the, the actual operation of it or the direction of it could change. But the word does help fill in.
Okay, any other thoughts on this?
I think that brings up a very valid point that one of the things we have to remember is that this is a guiding document and not a legislative document. And that's a very important distinction to remember.
Thank you for that, Dave, that's very true. I'll have you give my presentation next time and start it out for me.
I have a question on 2.4.
Okay.
Versus traditional single-use zoning tools. Now, how do we go about zoning something so that we can do all these different things for all these different people on all these different uses?
Let me reread this one and get up to date on it again. And then can you repeat your question for me? I'm sorry, Karen.
I don't even know how you could apply that. If everything is so flexible, then maybe we could just zone it all the same thing. And then they can come in with whatever differences they want.
I believe that what this is referring to is more some different zones. So instead of just having a zone that only allows, you know, single uses, getting some, maybe even it's a new zone that we create. I don't know for sure how we go about that. But having a zone that we create more mixing of uses in that particular zone. So it doesn't mean that you allow anything and everything within every single zone, but maybe setting aside some new zoning tools that help us create a mix of uses within that one specific zone.
That would, that would make better sense, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
So Amy, what you're talking about is redefining your use by rights parameters for different zones?
It may, or maybe creating of a new zone that gives some different mixes of uses within that zone. Of course, that would, you know, include some code amendments and changes in the future after the comp plan. But just some way where we could have some mixing of uses within just certain zoning types. And yes, so it would be a different type of uses by rights within certain zones.
Yeah, I almost think that the, that changing your use by right parameters would be easier than going back through and rezoning all the property in Montrose.
Yes. We're not doing that. I don't want that.
Don't make Amy leave us. Amy, does it seem like, I feel like we might have talked about how the redo district, the creation of it might have fit with this when the council created it back when they did, that it allowed some smaller setbacks in that area and it allowed some lesser parking requirements in order to facilitate some flexibility to encourage a certain type of development that council thought they needed then? Do you think that would fit?
Yeah, that's a perfect example.
But that's something they, they would have to come in and get clearance for, right? Approval? To change the setbacks and
They had to get an application for the redo projects and submit that application to the planning commission. But it gave the flexibility, flexibility to the planning department to be able to say yes. And that's why I was kind of advocating for expanding the boundaries of that redo district to give the planning department more flexibility to say yes, which really kind of falls into that 2.4 vision.
Well, that one seems like a really heavily packed statement in there. A lot could go on in there.
It does, it gives a lot of flexibility for different things that we could do to help encourage development in different ways.
So I'm sure that the implementation plan will take care of that, right?
It has some more specific items exactly that we'll talk about. Like, we made sure that we had an implementation item for each and every one of these goals and objectives.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on this principle? We will move on to
Amy, I did have one question kind of on 3.6. Actually, Amy, I did have one question kind of on, uh, three point six.
Okay.
And just on. The encourage the compact and contiguous development, growth efficient areas. And the, just the language on that, just kind of clarifying in my mind. When it's talking about the infill and redevelopment of older neighborhoods. When it's talking of sidewalk and infrastructure, are we, are we talking about like redoing our sewer lines, et cetera? And we're talking infra- infrastructure? What was kind of the thought behind that?
Yeah, I'm just reading it and remembering here. Just a moment. Yeah, that's exactly it. There, I remember us talking about this one and talking about, um. Just the need to make sure that our older neighborhoods are not forgotten and lost and that we continue to not just. Fill them in with new homes and new development, but that we're also focusing in on making sure that the infrastructure, um, the public services, the utilities, the streets, the sidewalks. And all of those things, um, continue to be. Or kept maintained as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Amy, um, on three point two, I know that this one, uh, I think is a, is a holdover or something that we're bringing forward again from, um, the last comp plan. Uh, and I remember, you know, the, I'm visualizing the map right now with the little stars and the various, uh, neighborhood centers around Montrose. How, like, I understand that this is a guiding document and it, and it's kind of, you know, it's, it's the, we would like to see this stuff happen. But. How do, how do we go about encouraging the development of that when? There, when there's no place to develop, uh, a center. Around like where, where I live, like right now, you, you look outside, it's, you know, subdivision after subdivision after subdivision, all the way down Niagara. There isn't anywhere to make a center unless we get rid of a housing subdivision and do something else. So I'm just wondering with some of these, the, the land use section. Has a lot of stuff in it that I, like, I totally agree with and I'd love to see. I'm wondering how much of it is just there as a, yeah, we'd love to see that sometime in the future versus. We can actually get there in 10 to 20 years. Cause the land use one, I know it came out of a couple of meetings from, uh, some of the bigger developers that, that are here in Montrose. This is the most important section of the document to them. And I just want to make sure that the stuff we have in here are things that can actually guide us when. Folks like that come to, to the planning commission or to, to council with, with ideas. That we can actually say, yeah, we can, you know, there is a way for us to get to some of these things. And then neighborhood centers was just an easy one for me to talk about because again, I, I know that this area around where I live on Ni- Niagara. Had one of those old dots, okay, we'd love to see a neighborhood center here. Now, maybe it's defining what that is because the Boys and Girls Club is going to build their new facility here. So maybe. That is a neighborhood center and it's, you know, it doesn't have to be a retail center to be one. But I don't know, maybe, maybe just some more definition with that and some of these other things that seem like maybe a bit too, too, in my opinion, too lofty when much of downtown is already developed and already zoned. I don't know, just an idea.
That's a good point. And we, yeah, that's a good point. And we did talk about that at great length in some of our meetings, how, um, we talked about it in the old plan and whether or not we wanted to bring it forward and still encouraging it. Cause like you said, we don't have a lot of property and areas within the city of Montrose right now, um, that are open for being neighborhood centers. That one that you spoke of is probably one of the few left. Um, and they're developing it, you know, like you said, for Boys and Girls Club, which kind of serves that function for a neighborhood center in some ways. But it also, I think, leaves it open for us to, if somebody wanted to annex some new property and they wanted to make it a neighborhood center. By keeping this in the comp plan, it's saying that we are open to that and we still like that idea that we had back in 2008 to encourage or to. Be open to those neighborhood centers coming to Montrose. We don't necessarily. Just want all of our development to be up and down Main Street and up and down Townsend Avenue, that we are open to, um, neighborhood centers should that opportunity present itself.
Well, wouldn't the current example be the land that we just annexed and, um. Put a zone on down by Chappeta Lakes. There's a gentleman from Telluride that's developing something there. It's going to be housing. It's going to be some commercial. It, it looks to me like this guy, what he's developing is what we're describing. For what it's worth.
Um, I would just, I would just say, Dave, that. It'd be a little different because of the location of that one. So, um, you're talking about the one south of Otter Road.
Yes, sir.
Burgett. So that would be a traditional shopping center, B three, highly commercial type activity. These neighborhood centers are more in the middle of residential areas. So.
Well, I understand that. I guess maybe I'm incorrect. I thought that the guy was also going to put some housing in there.
Yeah, he is. It's just when you're describing the neighborhood centers, it's more. A mini mart or a seven eleven that's within walking and biking for kids from their houses. Or if you need. A thing of bacon or milk for your breakfast, you drive all the way to Townsend kind of thing. That's kind of the difference. But what he's talking about doing is a mixed use development, uh, which would have, we would need to be flexible. And that goes back to the mixed use comment. Right now we handle most of the mixed use developments through PUDs, planned unit developments. Like the U R A and, and, um. And River Landing and some of those where we've said that you can put in a variety of things, but you have to go through the PUD process. If we put it in the comp plan that we're encouraging mixed use developments, like Amy and, and Ann mentioned, maybe we would. Create new zones just for that. And then they wouldn't have to go through a special PUD process. It would already be there. And so that's all we need to talk about when we're deciding what. What we want to see in different parts of the community.
Um, I, I do have a question for you, Bill. With this being in there, I mean, how aggressive could one be in this? I mean, could it be something where if, if. For instance, it was decided that every community that went in had to have X amount of square feet dedicated to. I mean, is that something that, that we could go that direction if that's what we wanted?
We didn't do that.
To, sorry, I was just dedicated to what neighborhood centers?
Yeah, yeah. For instance, if they said, if we said as part of the approval process for them, you know, just like landscaping or anything of green space. You have to have X amount of commercial, um, you know, space, you know, small, small commercial space within that neighborhood.
Go ahead. Just the definition on that from encourage the development of neighborhood centers to require the development of neighborhood centers. And I don't think we want to do that.
We didn't hear that from the public. We heard that we still wanted to be open to neighborhood centers, but nobody said anything about thinking that that should be a requirement, like. We might require parks and trails or certain things dedicated or landscaping or different things like that, like we currently do. But. We didn't hear anything from the public in regards to they thought that we should require neighborhood centers as part of a development. So I don't think that's the route we want to go.
Okay.
I, I think ultimately when Amy can tell us what the general consensus was among the public, then that's, that's where we should land on.
And, and Amy, uh, just for a matter of record, uh, Phoebe has joined us. Uh, I saw her name pop up there.
Yeah, I did too. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on land use and growth?
Uh, three point seven, Amy. Who in local government? Makes these decisions? You know, how that's supposed to work?
Let me read that one again. So you're wanting to know who within the city is directly responsible for that?
Yes, I do.
Um, it'd be a little bit of a lot of, it's a lot of our staff actually. And it'd be, you know, everywhere from planning, the city engineer, um, building would be involved in some of that. Um, our public works department and city management as well. Um, certain things may actually require planning commission involvement depending on the level, um, of the application.
Well, that's, uh, uh, going on with that, it says, uh, in the form of streamlined processes, business friendly regulations. So does that mean somebody can just make the decision? To bypass our current. Regulations on clearances, approvals. Zoning requests, you know?
I can comment on that. So when it's talking about streamlined processes, for example.
Yes.
That is what we've already done based on the Government Affairs Council's input back in 2012. We updated the city code and the planning and building processes to be much more streamlined and user-friendly. The old way of doing business at the city was if you wanted to develop a project. You would most likely go to the planning division first. Then they would provide input into your project. You would go back and make changes based on their input. Then they would return it to planning. Planning would then send it to the engineering division. Who would take a couple, three weeks to provide their input. Then you would work with your people to change yours, put it back to the city. Then it would go to the legal team, provide their input. So what we now can do in three to five weeks used to take four to six months. And so that's really the, and there was a huge cry from the building community back in 2011 when I started. And through the chamber and the Government Affairs Council to fix that process. It just was not user-friendly. So that's what the streamlined processes is. And that would be under staff responsibility. But the business friendly regulations piece would be under planning commission and the city council. And so based on the input back in 2012 and 13 from the Government Affairs Council, the city council actually updated the city code. To offer, using the input from builders and, and contractors in our community. To make the code less restrictive. So I remember many conversations about sign regulations, for example. They'd be in the business sector's mind, over restrictive. And so we made those less restrictive. There's more options for signage for business owners in the community now. It made the sign companies happy. It made business owners happy. At minimal risk to the community. Still don't allow big flashy billboards. We're not going to become Las Vegas. But you're able to advertise your business in a little bit more personalized manner than you could before. So that's an example of the business regulations that would come from council or planning commission or both. A lot of times it goes through both.
Any other questions? Comments on land use? Okay, let's move on to guiding principle number four. I believe we have seven of these, so about halfway through. Uh, guiding principle number four is on parks, trails and open space. And then I'll open it up to comments or questions on this guiding principle.
Just a comment, Amy. Um, this section makes me want to live in Montrose even more. If, 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 if we get, you know, if we continue down, uh, this road, it, it'll be a pretty awesome place to be. So, um. Yeah, this is, good job crafting this section.
Thank you, David. I like this one too.
And, and I think that this section, uh, coupled with the one previous where there were some issues with encouraging growth, really goes to show you. Where and how we mean to encourage growth by retaining our community and our field. And I, and I think that that's important that this document is seen in totality.
Okay, Amy, I'm looking through real quick just to see, I, I don't see it jumping out at me, but I know later on, when we get to the economic development section. There's a, there's a bit about, yeah, the city going after, uh, grants and partnering with, um. Basically other financial mechanisms to, to make some of this stuff pop, you know, happen and, and possible. Is there, is there anywhere in here where we say that, that like, that's what we want to do for the. Parks and recreation stuff as well, since we already have a pretty, we have a good track record of doing that now. And we want to just keep that something that we do in the future.
Yeah, I don't remember the specifics, um, what section it was under in here, but I do remember us talking about the continuation of seeking grants, you know, for helping us with continuing like the Uncompagri Riverway Trail. That we've been working on for years.
I think it's addressed in the goal for coordination under objectives. It talks about partnerships, grants and other funding sources.
There you go. Yep. Thanks, Barbara. Yeah, there's more specific things too in the implementation items too on this.
And one point eight also mentions it where it says. Ensure city staff can manage, maintain, improve and finance the long-term improvements to the park systems. And then earlier in the, in the section we were just in, it talked about. Making sure we have adequate budgets long-term for our capital improvement needs. I think those all address similar issue.
I love that you all found those so quickly. It must've been you did your homework and knew exactly which objectives to find and where.
On the subject of trails, I want to give a compliment to whoever organized the bicycle ride last night. My wife and, uh, kids both all rode in it. I wish I could have done it. I had to work, but they had a wonderful time.
Nice. Any other thoughts on parks, trails, open space? Trying to read body language and facial expressions. A little more difficult than when I see you guys.
Amy, just on, just to make sure that this was something, um, it's on the screen right now. So in three, two. This is something that Ann and Amy and I wanted to make sure. I wasn't at the meetings, um, with the advisory committee. But we wanted to make sure we're on the same page with what the community sentiment was. So three, two talks about conserving open space and agglans within the community. Basically by creating conservation easements and open space dedications. Are we all on the same page that? That's what we want to do moving forward and we think our community would support that?
Bill, could you give an example of an, an area that we've either already done that or that would be a good? A model for where we would do something like that in, in the city limits?
So we haven't gotten into the world of conservation easements much here in Montrose. It sometimes comes with criticism from the conservative community because it's controlling land use. And, and, um, that's not very popular. But we have dedicated open space just by putting it as city park property or putting it as a public zone. And then we just make sure we don't. Put it into private hands for development. But an example of how we could do it in the future would be. The city happens to own a piece of property behind Anderson Road. In that area from there all the way to the river. We could say, we never want development on that. We want it to maintain open space along the river corridor. And so, and you might have somebody that wants to come in and cares a lot about the environment and they want to. Do a conservation easement on that particular thing, which means forever it can never be developed. Barbara's dealt with this a bunch at the state level and would have a lot of insight into that. My, obviously my worry is just making sure that. I know we're going to have some critics if we start doing conservation easements. And are we all ready for that?
You're on mute, Barbara.
It does tell me that at least when I start to talk. Um, at the state level, we avoided putting conservation easements on state trust lands because it really ties. Though it makes the land a lot less valuable and really ties the owner's hands, in that case, the state, um, from any possible future development. But oftentimes if, uh. someone wanted to pair, pay fair market value for that land, and then they wanted to place a conservation easement on it, like the city of Boulder did that with a big portion of state trust lands, but after paying fair market value to the state for them. I, I think this part of this particular clause, I'm, I'm more interested in the part that talks about easements. You know, we're really concerned with keeping access to the river corridor and keeping those lands public. We're not interested in selling a developer land right up to the, to the river. So to me, it was more about those specific uses than taking a huge swath of land and the city putting a conservation easement on it and getting some money for doing that, but limiting the right to ever do anything else with it.
I think the, the fact that the way that it's written encourages us to conserve open space, but doesn't say conservation easements. And I think that's another important distinction, that it, it gives the intent of us maintaining land and open space and agricultural land, but it doesn't specifically say we're going to set conservation easements, which are a legislative tool, correct? So I think this gives us more flexibility the way that it's written, and it doesn't tie us to any kind of course of action.
What I like is it actually uses the word incentive or the words incentive-based, which means that we're looking at ways that we can make it advantageous for a developer to actually conserve the access to the waterfront if they were to develop that property, for instance.
That's an example of how I think the city would use it.
That's a good point.
So as an example, if we are, the way we've been doing it, I guess, where when we do an annexation, we, we require a trail dedication to the city, so we can put a trail in there along the river corridor or something like that. So it wasn't conservation easements in that discussion. Great. That makes me feel a lot better because I didn't want to have to deal with that particular headache, so thank you for that.
Good question. Any others for this guiding principle? Okay, I will move on to guiding principle number five, which is health, environment, and public safety. So this one's pretty impactful. It's one of our bigger chapters. As you can see through the different types of goals that are wrapped into this one, so I'll open it up for any kind of questions or comments of things that we may have missed the mark on or making sure that we represented the public comments appropriately.
I'll just say this, that from all the meetings we had, Amy, and, and from the initial meetings, this was one of our penny, the, the, one of the jars that received the most pennies, I'll just say that. And people had a lot to say about this. So, you know, I think that, that, as we look through it, I think we just got to keep that in mind, that this was really a heated conversation when it came around what we should do here. And, and people really were supportive of this.
That's true. This one did receive a lot of comments and a lot of support in the pennies in the jar, especially exercise that we did at the very beginning.
I think we were careful too in the first set of objectives, number one, to not step on county's roles and responsibilities and discuss the things that the city can do to facilitate healthy living, but not step into healthcare.
Good point.
Yeah, you packed a lot into this one, didn't you?
Yeah, this one was a little harder. Took some time to craft. And I remember us spending a lot of time on this chapter too. I think it took us the whole two-hour Advisory Committee meeting, or if not, one and a half meetings to go through this chapter. You guys spent a lot of time and effort on this.
Now, Amy, I, I do have a question, and, and we see this across, you know, all the sections. But, but here especially where we have county programs that exist. So support and encourage opportunities for accessible healthcare, mental health services. You know, are we going to build a, a actionable document after this that we can actually say, "What does that mean?" Because, you know, as good as it is, as, as a guiding document, my concern would be that the executables coming off of this would be very difficult to, I guess, to materialize. So, so what is the thought process there?
Well, you're right. I can't remember what our implementation items are off the top of my head for this specific chapter, but as Roy pointed out, we are very careful to not say, like, "We're not going to go and try to build a new healthcare facility." That's not our role. And so that's not something that we're going to do, but we would help support and encourage those different types of opportunities within the city.
Yeah, I, I could see us encouraging or supporting, let's say, the hospital if they wanted to expand, and we address certain zoning issues in a way that is friendly towards encouraging healthcare. But we are obviously not in the business of hospitals or anything, but the city can make life easier for them, or, I mean, you could flip it around and make things very difficult. And I think this gives us guidance on how we want to, you know, encourage those sorts of healthcare businesses, but not getting into it ourselves, obviously.
That's a really good example, Roy, especially like when it comes to the zoning or site development or anything like that, if any of those facilities would want to move or expand their services somewhere different.
I think the River Valley Health Center is probably a good example of that.
Yep.
Just curious, was there anybody representing the homeless when you did 1.4? I think that is tremendous, by the way. I'm really glad to see that in the plan.
Um, we had lots of people from the healthcare industry that spoke to that and came. And I actually do remember some homeless people coming to our meeting on housing and neighborhoods, and I spoke to a couple of them that came to our meetings. They were kind of a little apprehensive about coming, but I was really glad they did and that they felt comfortable coming to some of those as well. So that was really encouraging.
That is great. That's great. Thank you.
Um, Amy, on the, the very first sentence of the guiding principle, I don't like the word eat healthy or the phrase healthy eating. I don't know why. I just, just encourage and facilitate healthy lifestyle or healthy living. We're, we're, the city's not going to do anything about the way I eat, and quite frankly, Crash Burger's awesome, so I want to be able to eat there whenever I can, so. But I want to be able to ride my bike all over town afterwards, so I, I don't know.
Basket of carrots on the corner for you, Dave.
I don't know if anybody else doesn't like that, but I think it's a little, it's a little bit too, I don't know, Big Brother.
That's specific language.
It's overreaching.
We are part of the Heal Campaign statewide. We're a silver-level community, maybe gold now, which is Healthy Eating and Active Living Campaign. And there are dedicated Heal Cities across Colorado, and we're one of those. The healthy eating portion of that is access to locally grown food, like what Valley Food Partnership does, the promotion of the farmers' markets, farm-to-fork events and farm-to-fork restaurants. That's what the Healthy Eating Campaign across the state is all about. But the Healthy Eating and Active Living is simply language that comes straight out of the Heal Cities dedication that we have.
Yeah, when I was mayor, we got the Governor's Award for the city in Colorado for healthy eating and living.
You know, Amy, can we put a definition in there for that, what healthy eating means?
Yep.
That might be helpful.
Well, it's kind of it.
I, I think it's in there. Like, it's in 2.2. We talk about the, the heal stuff, so I, I just don't, I don't know. As a guiding principle, as something that's supposed to be kind of the highest level of what we're doing here, I, I just, I don't know. Putting the word eating in there, if I'm someone off the street that just picks it up and reads it, my first reaction is going to be, "What, why is a city telling me what I can eat?" That, that's all.
Sure. I agree with that because we're incorporating the healthy eating lifestyle in 2.2 and in the subsequent chapters. I don't know that it belongs in the guiding principle. I kind of agree with David that putting in the words, uh, healthy lifestyle and active living is more appropriate for that.
Yeah, I think we could do that. I think we could substitute healthy living for both the healthy eating and active lifestyle, and that those are called out specifically later, but that the guiding principle can replace both of those two things simply with, um, healthy lifestyle.
Right. Everybody in agreement on that? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Just from a wordsmithing standpoint, if you just drop the word eating, it might actually read better.
Any other thoughts? There's a lot in this principle.
Yeah, Amy, on, uh, public safety, if we can jump to there. Chad mentioned the bike ride yesterday, obviously. For those of you that don't know, it ended at the distillery. And I was really happy to see, because we talked about it over the last two years every time we've done bike rides with the Bike Alliance here in Montrose about sponsoring or getting the, uh, the city, you know, police to, to be, be a part of it. And two officers actually did join the group yesterday. And it was really, it was nice as a business owner to have them like, they actually came, you know, came into the business, not in any threatening way. Like, they came in to actually just shoot the breeze, see how we're doing. And I've talked to Chief Paul about it before, and I don't know how we incorporate it in here because I don't, I, you know, reading through this, I don't know if it really jumps out. And maybe it's not the right place for it either, but just something about the, from a public safety standpoint, we, we want the, we want the, the police officers, we want the police department to be, and we expect them to be part of the community, like more, more ingrained in the community. And I, I, I know that's something that, that they're working on and constantly working on with, with more people, they're going to be able to do that. But it just jumped out yesterday. That was the first time we've ever had, thankfully, any, any police at the distillery, and it was in a very positive, a very positive way, and a way that I'd like to see more of. You know, I'd like to see more guys in shorts and a polo shirt walking around town, walking into businesses, meeting business owners, asking them how they're doing. And I know that's, again, a staffing issue for the most part that's kept that from happening in the past, but I don't, I don't know if we can incorporate kind of what I'm getting at in this section or if it's appropriate to do that here. But I know we would break out the intelligence-led policing as a, as a model, and I know it's something that Blaine's, you know, working and backing to, to do, and I think it's a great, I think it's a great thing. But something just more about, and I don't want to use the word community-led policing, because that has a lot of things within the police community that we, that we may not want to use that term, so.
Say that again, Anthony?
Police and community engagement? Like maybe an increased level of law enforcement, you know, active in community engagement? I mean, because we do have a lot of events and things that are going on, and they, they could just pop up at different events and just say hello. And that would lead to, you know, some of the things in this section about public safety and, you know, increased, you know, safety in certain areas, you know, you know, parks and things like that.
I don't know if any of that is appropriate in this document. I think that's kind of getting into telling the police department how to do their job. And I think that's a real nebulous area and a potential problem for us to delineate that in this document.
Dave, I, I probably don't disagree with you. I think then, do we, should this document, you know, do we need to put the intelligence-led policing model in there as part of the actual goal for public safety? Because, you know, in, if this is a 20-year document, Blaine might not be the chief of police for the next 20 years. And the next chief of police and the next, you know, we may find out that the intelligence-led policing model's not the best way to do it, and, but this document says that it is. I don't know.
Agree with that.
I think that having that in H3, the, I, I don't, I don't necessarily think that we need to include the words in the reference to the intelligence-led policing model, because I think David's very right. Three years of experimentation might find out that that's not what is really the appropriate model for Montrose.
See, and I, I actually would agree with that too, and I think we have to remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when we did, when you guys were doing this implementation, this public safety plan, that was concurrently happening when we were trying to pass the 2A's. So that was on everybody's mindset, that we, we did all these presentations, it was in the paper, the intelligence-led policing. So David, I would agree with you, and Dave Frank, I would also agree with you. I think it, I think what you've got down there in 3.4 where it says, "Maintain a law enforcement presence in the heart of downtown", should probably go up into the goal and not so much the objective. Because Dave Frank is right. If you get into the hair splitting of this, it's not our job with, it's, it's, in my opinion, and I'm on the very bottom of the learning curve, so that's why I've listened so much and not said anything, but that's where we don't want, I don't think that's where we want to go with this document. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I agree with that. I, I would say that I wouldn't want to specify in 3.4 when it talks about maintaining a law enforcement presence in the heart of downtown. I don't know that we even want to be that specific about where we want to maintain a law enforcement presence all of through Montrose.
In the city of Montrose, right.
Entire city of Montrose.
Right.
I'm not comfortable really specifying that we want to maintain it in the heart of downtown.
I think that speaks to the construction.
That's saying, you want to keep your police station downtown and not out by the Justice Center on the edge of town.
Yeah. That just talks about the facilities.
Yeah, I could see that.
I totally agree with you, by the way, on taking out intelligence-led policing, and I think Thiebys is exactly right. It was just the timing of those discussions. And this is a planning document, not an administrative operational document. So I, I think any reference to how the police should do their job, it's not the appropriate document for that.
I checked that out.
Could we say something, continue to provide innovative public safety services to the Montrose community through officer engagement or officer police presence or police, I don't know exactly what the word would be, but to just involve within the community.
Doug, you're telling them how to do their job again.
I think just stopping it after community leaves it open to giving us all sorts of options on different ways that we could provide those innovative services. It could be through a wide variety of options. We're not specifying any certain types of means of doing that. Leaves it really wide open for the next 10 to 20 years on how we could do that.
Well, and actually.
That you talked about here.
If we're going that direction, I mean, really, 3.4 then is doing the same thing.
Well, that one.
They have to update, and, and, you know, and what they have to do to their facilities, it's telling them what, it's basically dictating how they should police.
Well, I think Bill spoke to that. I don't know. I think that was, what he's saying is it's specifically the facilities, is that we want to not, it's not talking about where we want the police to do their job or where they want to focus their efforts, but we're saying that we want the facilities and actually the PD itself to be located in the heart of our downtown and not way out on the edge of town somewhere. We want it to continue to be right here in our downtown and have a presence here.
Then let's spell it out, and just saying that maintains a downtown headquarters. Spell it out. Be more clear.
Okay.
Well, in this discussion, I wonder about 3.3, it seems that that item is sort of the result of some concerns people had six or nine months ago and probably still exists, but it's pretty specific about where we want safety presence or police presence.
I actually like 3.3. I think it's appropriate to the document, and that it's appropriate to put that in as a long-range goal. Because that's not telling them how to do their job, that's just highlighting areas where we want to maintain a high level of safety.
And we did hear that a lot from the public too, them calling out a lot of different areas, we tried to kind of group them together.
Good, okay. I like it then, too.
And I just want to comment on David and Anthony's position that law enforcement needs to be present at community events and and do frequent visitations with our small business owners in a non-threatening way. Blaine and I have talked a lot about that, and he's of that same mindset. And you're exactly right, it's a staffing issue currently. But thankfully, the community is allowing us to increase our staffing levels, and once we can do that, they'll have a lot more time to be proactive and not run call to call, and they'll actually have time to walk the beat and actually talk with people and spend more time. They are at community events, I make sure of that, and Blaine does as well. But they could be out there even more, so we are focusing on that.
Any others in this guiding principle?
Amy, on the historic section? I don't know with which goal or somewhere, I don't see that we've actually called out. You know, we say that, you know, we work with History Colorado and the Montrose Community, and we use Montrose Community a couple times, but we don't actually say anything about the Historic Preservation Commission. I don't know if we, if we need to, as far as them being a stakeholder in a lot of these, these goals, what, eight, eight through 10, it looks like. It could be because I think a lot of this was really before the Preservation Commission was rolling, maybe. I know it was kind of in, kind of right around the time that it got put together. But we might want to put them in here as like, you know, as a partner or as a facilitator of some of this stuff.
That's a good point.
I'm actually going to go the other direction. We said earlier, we wanted to remove all names, just in case people didn't exist anymore. Should we just say local partners?
Good call.
Or something along those lines, and it probably goes for 9.5, too.
Right, 9.5.
I think it's a very valid point.
We tried it once before, Anne assures me this time it's going to stick, David. Don't be rebel rousing, I see what you're doing.
Yeah.
All right, I made notes of that.
We'll double check, I can't remember now what we did in our implementation plan, but I think we might have referenced at least DART there, like we do here, but we might have referenced the Historic Preservation Commission there for some of the implementation partners.
You did add that, I remember that. So like in our implementation chapter, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, we would identify a certain implementation action item, and then we would set a priority, whether it's a long-term or a short-term or an ongoing item, and then we would list potential partners that could help us with implementation of those specific items, and we did add some historic preservation on some of those things, of some potential partners.
Right. Thanks for looking out for the team, David.
Always.
All right.
Amy, this is, this is Greg, could you, just by way of clarification, could you explain 8.5 to me?
All right, get back up to that one and read it, see where we're at. Anne, I might defer to you, because you know more about the historic preservation stuff than me, do you remember this one?
I do. This came from our Historic Resources Survey Plan.
That's what I was thinking.
And it doesn't have to stay in here, but at the same time as we were working on this comprehensive plan and the public outreach, we are also doing a Historic Resources Survey Plan with the Preservation Commission, and we had a couple of public, well, we had one public meeting in person and one on Zoom about that, and the Historic Resources Survey Plan looks at, just like it says, Historic Resources Buildings, Signs, and Landscapes in our neighborhoods. And this came up because there are some areas in our community where perhaps the buildings would not qualify for our local criteria to be designated as a local landmark or done, done at the state or national level. However, the community or a block or a neighborhood, the layout of that, the landscape, might still have a lot of what in historic preservation is called integrity, meaning it stayed intact for a long time, and the position of the houses, the spacing of the houses, and so this is how they described that in the plan. And so, for example, maybe the area around La Raza Park, even though there's been a lot of change to some of those houses, there might still be this, like, landscape there that we might want to consider designating in a different way as historically relevant, pertinent, and worth recognizing as perhaps even a landmark in and of itself, so. I know that's a lot to say, and maybe it makes me think, even if I have to explain it that much, we might need to rephrase it, but that's where that comes from.
Anne, did this have anything to do with, also like when we put the trail in and we had to approve the trail, and there was the the thought that there was a prayer building or a church there, is that, you know, but they weren't sure?
No.
The Marada?
Yeah, this wasn't about the Marada, this was more about, you know, oftentimes, more frequently, you designate buildings as historically significant, but there's this other way of sort of designating neighborhoods, and they call it like a landscape designation, but it was not about the Marada.
I was just curious, thanks.
We had a lot of input from the people in that area too, toward this.
Does it necessarily have to be restricted to minority neighborhoods? Is there something peculiar about that?
No, I think it just came up that way in the survey plan, because of some of the conversations about specific neighborhoods, but I think that's a great comment, it could be in any neighborhood.
I like the idea of removing the minority from that.
To protect historic neighborhoods?
Yes.
I think that's a great change.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thanks, Anne.
Amy, on the implementation plan, it might get, the implementation plan might answer my question here, but we reference, like, working with the community to do a lot of this stuff, and I think some of it is definitely warranted, as far as going out to the community and asking them, or what they, what they think, or getting them involved, or making them aware of what's going on. But some of the, some of these things, as far as, you know, evaluating whether we want buildings to be listed on whatever, if they're, if they're owned by private businesses or private entities, it's, it's the property owners that we need to be calling out, is who we need to work with, not necessarily the community at large. We do need the community's support, as, you know, as I'm very much aware with our project, but as far as whether our building got designated or not, it was because, you know, we want to. We want to do it, and it's the property owners that need to get, like, we need to get behind, or we need to get the property owners behind this vision. And I don't know if we need to call it out specifically versus just using the more vague term Montrose Community, if it's taken care of at the implementation phase, but I think it's important to make the distinction where we want the community as a whole to play a role, versus we just really need to get the property owners behind this idea that, you know, historic preservation is a good thing. I don't know, just a comment.
No, that's a good point. I'll be honest, I don't remember what we put in the implementation chapter specific to that. I'd have to look at it again, it's been a little while since I wrote that section. But we were very careful to say, you know, that we're not going to go out and force that issue, that we want to educate the businesses and the, you know, the business owners and the community about this opportunity that's in our community to be able to designate their properties, and to kind of continue to reach out to people and encourage them to do so if they want to. And I think we pulled some of the implementation.
And maybe getting, I mean, you know, if we're successful enough, if we get enough groundswell from the community at large, maybe it, maybe it gets the property owners to pay attention, so maybe it's fine leaving it the way it is.
And if you're familiar with that Historic Resource Survey Plan that Anne was talking about, and was part of that process, or I'm guessing you probably were, we took a lot of the implementation items from that plan and also wrapped it into the comp plan. Okay, any other thoughts on that chapter? Okay, I'll move down to principle six, it's like we got two left. This one is economy and opportunity. So I'll open it up once again to any questions or concerns.
I'm on a roll, so I'm going to keep talking.
Good, David.
Okay. So we've been really good, I think you did a great job to, on each of, each of the objectives, to use those words, like encourage or support, facilitate, unless it's something that the city actually can, you know, do. 1.6. Unless we're saying that the city is actively going to start looking to purchase buildings, I think we need to insert one of those clarification words before we develop and fill vacant buildings, unless the city's actually going to start doing that themselves.
Good catch.
Yep, good catch.
Which is, I mean, hey, if you guys want to do that, that's, that's cool, too.
I'll just kind of scroll through this slowly for those of you that might be reading along.
I think other than that, I think that this section is pretty, pretty tight.
A little shorter. Any other thoughts?
I know that a lot of talk came up in our meetings about the airport and just how we could impact that, and I see here where there's, you know, agencies and there's kind of loose verbiage. Is there any way that we can, I don't even know if it's possible, you know, I see support expansion of the airport, and that's kind of where we left it. But, you know, I don't know if there's any, you know, more active involvement that we could take as far as encouraging or working with them, or, you know, coming up with ideas, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I know that was difficult when we were talking about it there, but I really, I know that we don't have a lot of say-so. But I do know that the airport is important to our community, and I just, I just wish we had some other way to impact it other than just support expansion.
Yeah, and I think we talked about it a little bit in our implementation, like the things that we could do as, from a city standpoint, and some of those things could be, you know, encouraging or helping develop some of our trail systems and sidewalk systems to help make sure that we've got connectivity from the airport to our downtown, like the specific things that the city could do. But you're right, a lot of this is just coordinating and working and supporting the county when it comes to the airport.
But let's not forget, the city has a seat at the table and puts in a lot of money to Colorado Flaps Alliance. While the airport is the physical infrastructure, Colorado Flights Alliance is the organization that does all the negotiating with airlines and all the flight guarantees.
That's right, I remember that too now. You had some specific ideas in our implementation plan for that. Now that you've mentioned that, I kind of remember that, but I don't remember what the actual implementation item was, but I do remember you pointing that out.
Plus, we have a seat on the advisory board.
Yeah, we do have a seat on the airport advisory board, that's a specific city seat. I think my ideas surrounding Colorado Flights Alliance would say something to the effect that the city continue to financially support programs that, you know, that work with, work with the industry to bring flights and connectivity to Montrose. I just think that's really important, and we do put our, not only do we have a seat on that board, but we do contribute money out of our general fund to make that, those flight guarantees happen, because we know they're so important to our, our community. So it'd be nice to be able to reference our, our guiding document as to why we do that.
I agree.
I don't know that we need to get that specific on how we're implementing that, that's the implementation document, I think, rather than the guiding document.
It's in our implementation plan, I do remember that now.
And since it already exists in the implementation document, I don't know that we need to incorporate the actual implementation in this document.
That's fine, I think maybe there was more background information so that folks could understand what we are doing as a city around air travel. But it isn't just that we hope the county does a good job, but we are actively involved.
Well, I think that that statement, though, the support expansion of the airport is very limited and doesn't really speak to the financial support or the, or any other involvement other than we'll support expansion. I mean, it could be, I think there's, maybe there's something in here on transportation, you know, to and from the airport in connectivity section, but, I mean, I'm just, I'm more thinking if there was a way to, you know, I don't know, yes, that's an implementation, Dave, but maybe there's a way we could put something in here that just shows we'll continue to support beyond just expansion.
That we recognize that, that flight tourism is important to our local economy, and we continue to support and participate in discussions around that flight programs, airline programs, you know, contracts with airlines, something to that, right, because it has nothing to do with the physical airport, and I, it's totally separate, there's the physical airport, and then there's this whole other organization that schedules the flights.
And I think in support of that, that by that 3.6, in 10 years, if the airport is built to the actual total physical limits of its ability to expand, is this sentence still appropriate? But kind of in Barb's theme, if we change that wording and that verbiage and that wordsmith that to say we, we support a continue or continues to support a healthy and vibrant airport or something along those lines, I think that gives us more of a guiding document feel to this.
We want to support not only the physical infrastructure, but also the flight services, if you will. Exact right word to describe that, but it's, as Barbara said, it's two different things, it's, it's the service coming in and out of the city, and it's the the physical infrastructure, the facility.
Yeah, not just the expansion of the airport facility.
So I would also be servicing the airport as in, you know, maybe getting transportation or other things that could, you know, help to facilitate that expansion or growth.
Those are good points.
The one thing you have to remember when dealing with the airport, anybody taking services out there has to buy a permit to do that. Any addition, expansions of the airport has to be handled pretty much with the airport because it has to go through FAA before they can do anything. So they're pretty well tied in. The biggest thing we can do is at any time that they're requesting it would be to provide them with some support.
So would it behoove us as a, working with the county to even put something in there in support of a working relationship with the county as it relates to expansion of the airport and airport facilities? Since the airport's always going to be tied with the county. And just to recognize that relationship at that point.
Think that's a good suggestion.
I took notes on all those things and we'll work on wordsmithing this one. Three point six, that is.
That sounds great, Amy. And if I can help you understand more about Flights Alliance or anything, ask the city rep on that board, feel free to.
Thanks, I was planning on that. I was like, I'm gonna be calling Barbara. Thank you. Anything else in this principle? We've got about 10 minutes left, so I'll make sure we have time for the downtown. I don't want to cut you off either.
Amy, on one point eight, market and publicize the community's assets, is there, is there a current budget line item for that or are we committing the town to something new?
It's something that we currently do and I might let Bill and Anne expand on that more about things that we do through.
OPT.
Yeah. Yeah, it's currently budgeted for.
Which exact section or, because I'm looking at yours, Amy, I didn't pull my own separate one up.
One point eight, economic development.
It's, it does market and publicize the community's assets, attributes, quality of life and the economic competitiveness to potential businesses, individuals and families. And I would say that, that's everything really that our Office of Business and Tourism does with their budget.
Yeah, we use the retail sales enhancement monies, which is the vendor collection fee as well as our lodging tax revenues, restaurant excise taxes and those types of things to do everything that that one describes.
All right, I'm gonna move us down to downtown. So I'll make sure we can get through this and that we also finish on time. So guiding principle number seven, downtown.
Amy, I thought this one was pretty well, pretty tight, just like the last one was. I think you saved the two easiest ones for last. The, the character areas. And I only, only say this because I spent the last year and a half doing research on the area around where our property is. As far as character goes, like our building and like that corner used to have the other railroad spurs going through it. That's why it's a warehouse. And as far as look and feel, it shares similarities to the building that the brewery's in, that Two Rascals is in and the Coors building, which also all share similarities with Sampler Square. Now, as far as connectivity goes, obviously the fact that the railroads existing spur that they use goes, kind of cuts through there. Is that why we wouldn't want to include our area with the, the rest of the depot area? Because really, I mean, I don't see a way to connect. I'd love to connect, you know, the depot, Two Rascals and the Coors building with a way to get to our property and Sampler Square. And then it makes a little bit more sense. So I don't know, basically there's the, the realities of today, like does it make sense because of, from a connectivity standpoint? Or from the historical perspective, should we kind of start West Main a little bit further west? And include basically grand over, from Grand East as part of the depot because of the depot district, because historically that all was kind of the commercial industrial part of Main Street. Just a thought, just a comment.
I was gonna defer to Bill on this one. I think that's something that we could consider and I'd kind of like his thoughts on.
I think those are excellent points, David. These are carryovers from a DDA master plan from back in 2011 and 12. And just kind of made it easy by bringing it forward. The idea back then with the DDA was to have an eclectic mix of businesses in your area. They would do art walks, those types of things. And to separate that kind of look and feel with the pottery studio and painting stuff and sculpture art and those types of things was the goal back then. Separated from your traditional Main Street businesses. I don't ever remember discussions about crossing over the tracks and combining things that way. To me, I think that makes a lot of sense if you're looking from a historic functional perspective. And if there, if we could come up with some way to connect the two, that would be awesome. I don't know what, what council members feel about that, but I don't have a problem with that and that's, we didn't really have a lot of, I guess, intentions behind this. It was kind of a carryover layout of the character areas.
And we added, we added the West Main character area as well based on comments that we heard from the community and the advisory committee. So that one is new.
Well, I think, I think it's cool. Like I think because it may not really have a lot of character as it, you know, as it is today, kind of making that area a, you know, as you're going, if you're going from east to west, it's like the, the lead into the river corridor and kind of, you know, making it feel that way. I think it's really cool. I would say with the, at least some of the other ones on the map, obviously our, our main downtown, excuse me, downtown area, the depot, the civic area. And then it's not labeled as such, but kind of the original downtown residential areas, if that was a district. I think we need to look at maybe, if we're going to keep this as a concept as something that we want to have in the comprehensive plan, I would look to tie this in at least a little bit with the historic preservation stuff. Because some of these districts are, they, some of them should be districts purely because historically the buildings that are in them all look and feel the same. And we want to, we want to promote that. And I know that Preservation Commission is looking at possibly identifying historically significant parts of or areas of the city. And that makes it a lot easier to then designate individual buildings as well. And we wouldn't want to have those two plans conflicting, I don't think.
Good point.
I think this area of West Main for many years was kind of neglected. And getting some fresh creative thought applied here is terrific. And I would really support any new ideas, like you've mentioned, David, or Bill asked what council thinks. So I, I'm really in favor of putting more focus and creative thought into this part of downtown. I think it's important and has a lot of historic character and sort of needs some revitalization that you're starting, David. So I hope we could make that continue.
I like the idea of doing that in support of that. The one thing I do question is, right now, like as Bill mentioned, this map is an older map with the character areas. I think it's important to also recognize and realize that our downtown character areas are bigger than this now. You know, we recognize that, that we have that one little area when our economic impact is actually larger. Goes further south downtown and then it goes back over onto North First. I would like to see us rework this entire map and rethink this rather than going by this old document.
Yep, I would agree.
We did change it a little bit, but not a lot. So Bill and Anne and I can go back to the drawing table and kind of relook at this map and see what kind of changes we can make to it.
Yeah, make it reflect the realities of where our economic areas, our downtown economic areas are.
I think if we want to do that, we should probably involve the DART group and especially the DART Economic Vitality and Design Committees. And, and do it that way rather than just Amy and Anne and I changing it. We should maybe rekindle those discussions because we have so many representatives from a variety of sectors on the DART board.
I'll work with Chelsea to put that on our next agenda.
And Bill and Amy, I don't know if you guys can comment. I know last summer, whenever we kicked this off, around the same time, the city either was going to get a grant or had postponed getting it and was going to get it later on in the year when we were further along in the development of the comp plan. But specifically to use that grant money to do a downtown, like downtown focused development plan. And I, I know DART was kind of going to head that up, or at least that I think was the intention. And then that plan would kind of get nested into the comp plan. Did that actually happen or is that still like in the works? Or is it not happening at all?
Bill, do you want to talk about that? That's that Community Builders Grant.
Yeah, we, we did the downtown survey piece, that project. And then with the Community Builders, we decided at that time to postpone that project really indefinitely until we got a little further along in consensus building with DART and and seeing if we were all on the same page as far as we wanted to do, what we wanted to do on that. And then we started kind of redirecting the discussions to more of the capital infrastructure, Centennial Plaza design and some of those things. So we can definitely talk about that stuff. Anne, am I forgetting anything?
No, I think maybe one thing with the timing, David, was that was when the DDA was dissolved and so the timing of that grant no longer kind of corresponded with what was happening here in Montrose with our discussions about downtown. And so we included downtown in this master, this comprehensive planning effort. And we definitely still could, like Bill said, and do a separate planning efforts both focused just on downtown that would all be incorporated into this plan, either directly or referenced. Like we have like a Parks Master Plan, for example. And so all of these things tie together and work together, even though they may be in separate documents.
Okay, yeah, it sounds like that, that grant might be being used for more like implementation stuff rather than high level comprehensive planning things. So that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that if it was going to happen, that it was something that got done while we were doing this process, if it, if it was appropriate. Because there's no reason to have a bunch of plans that conflict with each other. So that's all. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be the case.
The less plans we have, the easier to implement.
Yeah.
The less things to put on the shelf too, so that's good.
Sorry, I had to move and plug in. My battery's running low. All right, any other comments on the downtown section? I know we're running a little over, so I want to be respectful of everybody's time.
And on now, section one point five, it says encourage and facilitate mixed use development. The next section says provide appropriate buffering. Don't those counter each other?
At one point five and which other one?
It's all in one point five.
Oh, in one point five. Okay, let me read that real quick.
Is in one point five.
I'll bring this up too, so everybody knows where we're at. I don't know that they're really contradictory, but it's just once again, leaving us open to flexible types of development within our downtown. But where we, so we might have one zone that does have mixed use development where we allow both the business and the residential. But then if there's other places that are meant to be separate, that we do have good buffering between those two zones. So we might have a mix of things. And as you can see, our downtown's pretty wide, stretching from, you know, San Juan Avenue all the way over to the river. So there's a lot of opportunity to do that. You might find in one zone that you want just commercial or just residential or something like that. And then in another zone, you want to be able to have mixed use development in specifics, like closer to the heart of downtown.
Amy, what if we said, encourage, facilitate and incentivize mixed use development while providing appropriate buffering and zoning between downtown commercial and residential?
We can do that.
Would that help? I don't, I don't know if that addresses the concern or not.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that statement actually, and tell me, and honestly, I don't know, but as far as a planning commission, that's could be a very important statement that needs to be pretty crystal clear in the future. Because I have been, as long as I've been in Montrose, it's 40 years, I have actually gone to some city council meetings where they would sit there and say divine, define downtown. And some people would say, well, it goes as far as, say, South Fifth and then, then they would, and I know that does not, and I know we've gone over time, so this, we could talk about it later, but I think defining downtown and having that pretty crystal clear as to how we can zone and what goes in there to me needs to be, and I think that what Bill said helps define that a little bit better, in my mind anyway.
I think it's important that, that one dot five doesn't preclude the kind of thing that happened at the Vine Building where, I mean, you literally have retail downstairs and residential upstairs. And I want to make sure that whatever we say here doesn't make that either difficult or impossible in the future. Because there's plenty of buildings downtown where more of that could happen.
And hopefully so, actually.
Yeah, so, so I just want to make sure, however we reword this, we don't all of a sudden preclude a really valuable kind of development.
Yeah, that goes back to, is this a governing? Is it just a place, something to go from? Or is it actually going to become a governing and that?
Guiding document, not a legislative document.
Right.
Right, and our zoning in our code is going to speak specifically to what is allowed as uses by rights or conditional uses. It's one of those zones, so that's our guide.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thanks.
Sure. Okay. All right, well, if anybody else has any other questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to me. I don't want to make obviously a bunch of small changes or anything like that based on that's kind of the point of all this meeting together tonight. So that way we could, you know, come up with a document that we are all in agreement with and making sure that we're addressing the public's comments and their concerns and making sure that we weren't misrepresenting anything that we heard from the public meetings. So really appreciate everybody's feedback tonight and being here. So really appreciate everybody's feedback tonight and being here. Thank you for coming to a late meeting and staying late, and then we went a little over, so with that, if Bill and Anne have anything else to share, I'll let them, but otherwise, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Amy, very much.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, everyone.
Great meeting. Thanks.
Have a great night, everyone.
Excellent job.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.